Is now 7:00 PM. Welcome to the Tuesday, February 18th, 2025 Town Council meeting. Our meeting this evening will be broadcast live on the Town of Double Oak YouTube channel. Once on the channel, please click on the Live button. Out of respect for all those in attendance, please refrain from talking to other members of the audience during the meeting and silence all electronic devices while in the Cook-Wilkinson Community Government Room. I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'd like to ask our Assistant Town Administrator Lynn Jones to please call the roll.
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Gortney?
Here.
Deputy Pro Tem Welland?
Here.
Mr. Dietrich?
Here.
Dr. Kay?
Here.
Ms. Robertson? We have a call.
All right, thank you. Councilperson Dietrich will now lead us in an invocation.
Lord, thank you for bringing people here safely and bless the people who have come and those not able to come. Thank you for protecting our first responders and those in our city and helping and help us make good decisions. Jesus name, amen.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Gortney will now lead us into pledges. Can you please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honoring the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. All right, item two this evening, citizen comments, non-agenda subjects. The next segment is intended for the citizen comment on subject on those, any subject except those that appear on the agenda. Those citizens wishing to address an agenda item will be recognized at the appropriate time. Any citizen comments at this time will not receive any verbal council response, nor must the citizen expect any discourse with the mayor or other, any other council member. This is a procedural rule, not intended to convey a lack of interest or discourtesy, but rather to provide time for all citizens to speak and to move on to new business of the council. As a reminder, all town council proceedings, including citizen comments, are recorded for record-keeping purposes. We have one citizen up on our non-agenda items tonight. Jean Hillier, will you please come up to the podium?
Jean Hillier, 170 Trailing Oaks Drive. Just a reminder, I mentioned at the last meeting and it didn't make any of the Friday updates, but Oak View is under construction, is down to one lane. So if you could think to include that, if it's still under construction Friday, people who use that, it would be appreciated, particularly since we're having this weird weather and the roads are kind of nuts anyhow. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Chris, can we, can I get a list so I can kind of start feeding that into the Friday? Okay, thank you. Item number three, consent agenda. All consent agenda items listed are considered to be routine by the town council and will be enacted upon by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests in which the event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Information concerning consent agenda items is available for public review. We have one item on the consent agenda. It's Consider an Act on the minutes of February 3rd, 2025. Council, are there any corrections to the minutes? All right. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the consent agenda?
I move to approve the minutes in the consent agenda for February 3rd, 2025.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilperson Dietrich and a second by Councilperson Rivera. Lynn, can you please call the vote?
Ms. Welland?
Aye.
Dr. Kay?
Aye.
Mr. Gortney?
Aye.
Mr. Dietrich?
Aye.
All right, the consent agenda passes, thank you. We're going to jump into Mayor, Councilmembers, and staff reports. Since it is kind of a rough evening out there, folks, we're going to, we're going to move through some things, but yet at the same time, we'll debate on what we, we'll debate the proper way tonight some, to make sure that, that everything is covered, council. So as much as we'll be cognizant with the weather and the time, but we've still got town business to do. So I'm going to go ahead and switch up the order here a little bit tonight, so I'm going to go ahead and start with you, Chief, on the public work, or, excuse me, on the public
We had the King's Road closure. There was some confusion on the first day of the closure. Took folks a little while to figure out what the detour route was, but after the first few days, we had actually more problems with bicycles passing through the closed area than cars. Police presence over the weekend of 2/8 to 2/9 seems to have eliminated that issue. Contractors finished the work on Saturday, 2/15, but needed time for the top coat to cure. On Sunday, 2/16, we had multiple vehicles moving barricades to drive around them. We issued multiple citations and fortunately, there was no damage to the road service as a result of that. The speed trailer was deployed on Simmons Road from January 15th to February 12th, which is 28 days. Simmons Road was on the detour route for the King's Road closure. During that time, 38,302 vehicles passed the monitored location with 98.4% of vehicles either below the speed limit or moderately above the speed limit and 1.6% of vehicles excessively above the speed limit. The average violation speed was 33.58 miles per hour. We attended the Denton County Emergency Services District banquet to present a life-saving award to Double Oak Police Officer Joe Scalco for his assistance on an accidental shooting in Copper Canyon. Officer Scalco applied pressure to the victim's femoral artery wound to control bleeding until medical services could take over and transport. And that was kind of a cool banquet. The, the victim was there and, and spoke to all the first responders that saved him. We attended an annual State of the Center meeting at the Children's Advocacy Center for North Texas. The CAC works with the Department of Family and Protective Services, law enforcement, and the District Attorney's Office to provide coordinated investigations, forensic interviews, and victim services in cases of child abuse and neglect. The meeting reviewed case statistics for 2024, discussed legislative changes that affect team members, and included a discussion of what is ahead for the center and its partners. We also attended the Denton County Sexual Assault Response Team meeting. The SART coordinates a multidisciplinary response to sexual assaults of adult individuals. It provides team member coordination and victim services for adult victims of sexual assaults, similar to what the CAC provides for child victims.
Excellent. And the, the ranks are doing well, troops?
Everybody's doing well. We're trying to fill in for the vacancy. We have kind of a preliminary interview scheduled on Thursday for one candidate, so we've got some hopes there.
Excellent. Thank you, Chief. I appreciate that. Great report. We're going to jump over to Public Works.
Yeah, the big thing obviously is King's Road being finished. Thank you for everybody, for your patience dealing with our weather issues and a special thank you to the police department for, for taking care of those issues. I talked with the contractor today. Due to the extremely cold weather, the rest of the week, they won't be starting the other ones until Friday because it's just too cold to do anything the next couple of weeks. That's about it.
And then we will get, Jean, we'll get a list and I'll get it into the Friday update. So we were kind of focused on King's Road on Friday.
You actually are making progress, I hope you.
Okay, all right. And I appreciate you giving me a call on Saturday about the King's Road stuff, so thank you. Administration. Lynn? Okay, all right.
I just, just one quick announcement for the council. As you know, we've been working behind the scenes on the financial system that we've been talking about. We'll be bringing that to council next month for review and then later, hopefully approval.
Roads Committee.
Well, we have a meeting this Saturday, so.
What time?
10. You gonna make it?
I'll be there.
Okay, sounds good. And Chris said we're still good, so.
Okay.
Yep, that's about it for roads for now.
Drainage.
We had a meeting and I wasn't there.
Okay.
Because I was sick.
We had a very good meeting. We missed you though, all right? So we, we had four participants on the committee and we had some really good discussion about, and even one of the people that are on the committee actually does this for a living, so that was very positive. We had a lot of discussion around King's Road. As we all know, there's always going to be a lot of discussion about King's Road and drainage, but we are going to figure out some sort of a public service announcement to, to reach out to all the citizens, to have them go out in their front yards and check and see if there might be a cross culvert in their yard. We've identified, I think, 25 or 30 of them through the half-study. I know there's a few more out there. We want to get them all identified. And then I think common sense through the conversation was that in order to really start to take care of, of the issues that we have, you kind of have to start at the bottom of the hill before you go to the top of the hill. Except we do have one public safety issue and it is on cross timbers just east or just west of Cedar Crest and the road, I can't remember what the other road is. And so I went out and took pictures and did some measurements and things and I'll bring it back to the next drainage meeting. I have the notes for you, but since you were, you've been out, I didn't want to bother with them. Thanks. So it was good, good meeting and then also we, Chris, when, you'll see this when we do our report out of the audit, we have, our fund balances all used to flow together as one, Roads and Drainage. And Chris, working with our, with Carl, we have now separated those two out, so there will be designated funds for Roads, designated funds for Drainage separate. And so with the whole intent is that, just like we do with Mill and Overlay and we do with Crack Seal, that we start down the path with our Drainage as finding those worst cross culverts and we start to build those in as a project as well. And then of course, anything that's a little bit larger will require a lot more detail of work, not only on the council's part, the committee's part, but also the citizens' part. And then the other piece of it is that it still does come back to the fact that there is onus on, on every citizen of the town to go out and improve their bar ditch situation. So that's, that was one of the takeaways for the next meeting is that we're going to kind of talk about how we can get the message out and do some research on that, so. But good meeting overall, good group. So thank you, Mike. All right, Mayor and Council?
Nothing for today, thank you.
Pat?
I just have one comment. So last time a citizen, Jean Hillier asked about the taxes, I just looked into it. Bakeries have a very good lobby. There is no tax on any baked good. However, if you prepare it, meaning your kolaches have a sausage, if there's a prepared food at that bakery, they charge you tax on the kolache, but not the other baked goods. Same thing with Brahms, because I think that's what somebody said, that they weren't taxed. Well, they actually are. If you get a hamburger or something where they have to cook it, then it's taxed. If it requires no labor, it is not taxed. If it is a junk food, like a soft drink, it is taxed. The tax code on food is so very convoluted, it is crazy. That's what I'm going to tell you. So I looked into it further just to figure out. So we should be getting some money from Brahms. People should be buying hamburgers. A little bit, okay.
And we're in the process of getting a report. The sales tax report is not an easy report to get from the state, so we're working through the motions on that.
And even the bakery, because they might have some sausages in a kolache.
Well, the kolaches are taxed, but nothing else in that place. Milk is not taxed either. Milk also has a good lobby, so.
We've already hit on King's Road, so I'll leave it there, Mark. And then of course, we're going to have three days of cold weather. Do your best to be safe with what you're doing with your, how you're heating your homes and such. We're not supposed to have a hit to the grid, but that still doesn't mean that things happen and obviously we want to, to make sure that our first responders don't have to get out and start taking care of fires and things like that. So just be cautious and be safe, citizens, while we work through the next three days. And of course, protect your pipes, keep, get your pets inside. And I get it, a lot of the plants started to bloom because we had 80 degrees, you know, do your best on those. The good news is that when, when we lose a plant, we plant a metal one and then I don't have to cover it, so it really makes a difference. All right. Item five, new business. Item number 12 is Discuss, Consider an Act on Adopting An Ordinance, 25-02, Providing a 2% Residential Homestead Exemption From the Town's Ad Valorem Tax. And this is Mayor Pro Tem Gortney and Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Welland. Anything you'd like to add for that?
We talked about it last time.
We did.
And discussed it a little bit then, and so I have nothing further to add, except that we did get a financial summary to look at that and we're on, we're actually above target on our revenue for right now. Because that's one of the things I wanted to know and I'd been asked, is where are we on revenue? We're above target for our budget, so we're in good shape and as we said before, we think we have some other additional revenues that will come online next year. So we look like we're in good shape where it won't affect our bottom line.
I agree. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yep.
Okay. I just wanted to take a minute to, if, if citizens aren't aware of what took place in our Texas Senate this past week, Senate Bill 4 is a collaborative effort for property tax relief that was put up and, and voted on and it, I think it voted 31-0 by the Senate. It's now moved to the House and what that Senate, Texas Senate Bill 4 is, or SB 4, it will increase the statewide homestead exemption from $100,000 to $140,000. And what that means is that obviously that additional $40,000 comes off your property tax value, which means that your, your value is less than what it should be because of the exemption. And if you are a senior over 65, the, with the senior exemption, it moved to $150,000. Again, I said it's, it's moved to the House. The way that the Texas government works is if, if one side thinks it's great, the other side usually wants to mess with it. I hope that's not the case this year. This, this results in about a $500 annual savings for homeowners across Texas. And if for some reason that you live in a home that is less than $140,000, that means you pay no property tax. So it does make a difference for those folks in that price range of homes, so. And then of course, the extra $50,000. And why that matters is, you know, we're trying to do our best here with, in, in Double Oak to balance that as well. And I think moving from 1% to 2% on our homestead exemption, it just falls right in line with the fact that, that both state and local government are doing our best to do, to address the property tax situation in Texas. So with that said, any other comments or questions, Council? All right, is there a motion on item 12?
I move that we adopt ordinance 2502, providing a 2% residential homestead exemption for the town's ad valorem tax.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right, we had a motion by Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Welland and a second by Mayor Pro Tem Gortney. Lynn, can you please call the vote?
Mr. Gortney?
Aye.
Mr. Dietrich?
Aye.
Ms. Welland?
Aye.
Dr. Kay?
Aye.
All right, the item passes, thank you, Council. This is a, this will take, this extra 1% will be on your next year's tax bill. So I appreciate the hard work that you all put into this and we'll monitor this as we go along. I actually was contacted by a citizen before you all did this and basically was asking if there was anything that the, the town was going to do as it relates to addressing this, so appreciate the citizens reaching out as well. Item 13, Discuss, Consider an Act on Accepting the 2024 through 2029 MS Stormwater Management Program from Hafen Associates. This is a procedural thing that we have to do every five years, Council. This year was a little bit different. They asked us for some additional information that Chris did an excellent job of, of taking control of and updating it, so appreciate that, Chris. Are there any questions on this? This is, this is public record. If you haven't read it, it's a great read, it's 55 pages. But it keeps us, the town in compliance with the stormwater management.
So I, I did, I actually did read it, because I, you know, have time on my hands to read stuff like this. It said in here that we have some public notices that should be given and all. Do we do that regularly? Okay, that's the only thing I was noticing and I couldn't recall receiving any notices before, so I was like, hmm, do we do that?
It's usually.
Yeah, the biggest thing is we have to keep it updated on our website.
Okay.
And keep those notices. There's a few extra little things that we have to do this year, over the next five years that they kind of added on it, added on us, but we'll be able to comply with all those regulations.
Okay, because that was the only thing I saw that I thought was different or that I didn't recall seeing before.
Yeah, it's something the town does every five years. I do get a sense after this one that when we do it again in five years, there's going to be a lot more added to it. And it's, it's the state, it's, it's, I totally understand it because we have precious resources here that we've got to protect. So whatever we need to do to do it, we'll make sure we're there, we're in compliance with it. Any other further discussion? All right, do we have a motion?
I move that we accept the 2024-25 MS4 Stormwater Management Program from Hafen Associates.
Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Gortney and a second by Councilperson Rivera. Lynn, can you please call the vote?
Dr. Kay?
Aye.
Mr. Dietrich?
Aye.
Ms. Welland?
Aye.
Mr. Gortney?
Aye.
All right, thank you, Council. And just as a reminder on that, it's something that's budgeted for every year, whenever, or every five years too, so it's a budgeted item. Item 14, Discuss, Consider an Act on Accepting the Racial Profiling Report for 2024, presentation by Chief Dan Miller. You need the screens down. Okay. It's trying.
We just need a cable.
Right.
Along with.
It's really interesting. Oh, it's sometimes, it works sometimes.
Well, it absolutely worked at 4:30, I can see that.
Were you sitting in that spot?
I perhaps actually was.
And it tends to do that to all of us.
Hmm.
I mean, I think you had one of those left, right?
I do. Yeah, it, it worked. We had it up at 4:30, so I'm not quite sure what I'm doing wrong here. Let me try to cast it again. And now it says couldn't connect, which it did connect last time, so let's try it again. Tell you what, we're going to do, well, we'll give you a chance, we'll move on to an item and come back. Okay. Does that work? Yeah. Since yours is just, all right, we're going to move, move on to item 15. Discuss, Consider an Act on the Change Order Number One from, is it Jago? Am I pronouncing that right?
Yeah.
Jago, Jago Public in the amount of 17,867.81 for the 2024 Asphalt Streets Project. Presentation by Town Administrator Chris Loggernauer.
Yeah, for our major roads project, I'm just coming to you guys for approval for a change order. It's basically, it includes two items. We, we felt it was important to add the signage, the electric board, just to give the people the notification that was not included in the original bid, so that is part of the change order. And additionally, additionally, there were some testing, additional testing that was required for King's Road. When they went into it, they, they actually had to go down pretty deep into the subgrade and so there were some additional testing requirements for that project, so. Like I said, this accounts for about a 4% of the entire project and there is money in the Roads account to cover this.
Questions, Council?
That's pretty self-explanatory in the.
Yeah, moving forward, when we do the Mill and Overlay, I think we should have them at least give us a bid on the signage. I think that, that was very important with King's Road, I think. And I know we didn't do it in the, in the past, but any one of, any of our major streets, we should, you know.
And not only that, but the verbiage in our required testing, I will be upgrading to make sure that everything gets included next time.
Okay. All right. No further questions, Council? Is there a motion to approve?
I move that we act on Change Order Number One from Jago Public in the amount of 17,867.81.
Do we have a second?
A second.
We had a motion by Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Welland and a second by Councilperson Dietrich. Lynn, can you please call the vote?
Mr. Dietrich?
Aye.
Mr. Gortney?
Aye.
Dr. Kay?
Aye.
Ms. Welland?
Aye.
All right, thank you, Council. Now we'll go back to item 14, Discuss, Consider an Act on Accepting the Racial Profiling Report for 2024, presentation by Chief Dan Miller.
And this will be a pretty brief presentation. The entire report is in the package, it was 44 pages, including attachments, so I'm not going to read 44 pages for y'all. Basically to sum it up, the Texas Code of Criminal Procedure, Article 2B.0051 to 2B.0055, Racial Profiling Motor Vehicle Stops, requires that each law enforcement agency in the state of Texas adopts a detailed written policy on racial profiling, collects information regarding racial profiling traffic stops, and submits an annual report to the state and to the governing body of the municipality regarding the information collected. So this satisfies that report to the governing body. What is racial profiling? Code of Criminal Procedure defines it as a law enforcement initiated action based on an individual's race, ethnicity, or national, national origin, rather than on an individual's behavior or on information identifying the individual as having engaged in criminal activity. So basically what we're trying to do is prevent people from being stopped just because of their race, ethnicity, or national origin. Couple of charts. This first chart shows all of our traffic stops for, from January 1st to December 31st of 2024 and the racial and ethnic makeup of the drivers in those traffic stops. So 69% were white, 11% were Hispanic or Latino, 8% were black, 12% were Asian or Pacific Islanders, and less than 1% were either Alaskan natives or Native Americans. So then you ask, how does that compare to the overall population? This next chart shows those numbers along with the relevant Denton County percent of population. So we see that Denton County has a white population of 52.9% and they compromise, they comprised 69% of our traffic stops, so slightly more than would be expected. The black Denton County population is about 12.5%, about 8% of our traffic stops were black drivers. Hispanic Denton County population is about 20.5%, 11% of our traffic stops were Hispanic drivers. For Asian people, 12.1% Denton County population, we were right at 12% on traffic stops, so just about even. And then the Native American and Native Alaskan populations were way less than 1% for our traffic stops and comprised about 0.8% of the Denton County population. So the, the report goes into a lot more detail as far as the outcome of the traffic stop, whether a citation was issued, whether a search was conducted. If a search was conducted, was it a consent search? Was it a probable cause search? Was it a search of inventory? What was found in that search? Was, was contraband found? What type of contraband? So on and so forth. So all that data is in the complete package that you have, but this is kind of the gist of it. And, and to simplify it, what it says is, we tend to stop people. is, we tend to stop people because they made a traffic violation. You know, the opacity of the window, being behind the vehicle, weather, makes it very difficult to tell who's driving the car that you're stopping. And what we see is that's played out in these numbers, is that there's a pretty good correlation between the overall population of Denton County and, and the number of traffic stops that we make. Two reasons for using the Denton County population. One is that a lot of pass-through traffic here. It's not just local residents.
Correct.
And two, the United States Census doesn't break out any municipality smaller than five, I think it's 5,000 people. So, Double Oak isn't broken out there. Any questions? Pretty simple.
Yeah, that was an interesting report. I went through some of it, and it's like, wow, that's quite the breakdown. I mean, every page was just really detailed.
Yeah, and all of those, all of those categories required by the state of Texas. They have a standardized reporting format that we have to abide. Now, fortunately, we have electronic ticket meters, so the officers enter that in as they're making the traffic stop, and then the software compiles it for us, which makes it a whole lot easier.
Oh, yeah.
Because back when, I'm old enough, we wrote paper tickets, and we had to go through every single paper ticket and collect that, that information, so.
Other questions? And, correct me if I'm wrong, when the, the overall system we're looking at, doesn't that gonna have some new bells and whistles for our officers?
Not so much for the officers.
Mm-hmm.
Or we'll be getting others.
You'll be getting other similar-type reports like that with that much detail. We'll be talking about that more next month when we share the ERP with everybody.
Okay. Chief, anything you want to add in terms of your history with all of your years of experience, in terms of something like this?
So, you know, as I noted in the report, the vast majority of police officers are out doing the right thing for the right reason, and that's, that's true, especially true in Double Oak. But, it's never a bad thing to have a little bit of extra accountability. Keep us all honest and on the up and up. And, and time after time after time, what we see in most of these, these racial profiling reports is that it, it pretty much squares with the overall population. The percentages almost always fairly closely match up. If anything, we're, we're stopping more white folks than we should, so.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. And again, the, the report was in the packet, and it is a good read. I didn't get through all of it yet, but I thought it was very interesting, so, thank you for doing that. Thank you for, for what you're doing and what your officers are doing, so. So, Council, are there any further discussion or any questions? Alright, is there a motion?
I move to accept the racial profiling report for 2024.
A second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilperson Dietrich, and a second by Deputy Mayor Pro Tim Wellen. Lynn, can you please call the vote?
Mr. Dietrich?
Aye.
Ms. Wellen?
Aye.
Mr. Gortney?
Aye.
And Dr. Kay?
Aye.
Alright, thank you, Council. Thank you, Chief, and thank your officers as well. Moving on to item sixteen, Discuss, Consider, and Act On The Estimate From Blag Tire And Services For Repair Of The 2017 Dodge Charger Police Vehicle In The Amount Of $4,328.30. Presentation by Chief Dan Miller.
Yeah, so the 2017 Charger is driven by Sergeant Hufman, and she makes a lot of runs up to Denton County to the courthouse to get subpoenas signed, to get warrants signed, and things like that. She's in that car a lot. She's called out every time we have a, you know, a significant crime that needs investigation, so it's important that that car be reliable. She started to smell gas when she was in the car, and that's why it was originally brought over to Blag. The smell of gas got worse if the car was idling for any period of time. Got over to Blag, and they found a crack in the, in the gas tank and quoted us to replace that. They also went over the entire car and found that it needed brakes. It needed two upper control arms, and it needed one wheel bearing, and they recommended the cabin air filter be replaced because of the gas fumes in the car. So, that's, the total is 43.28. We should be able to recoup some of that cost when we send the Durango to auction, which is ready to go.
And I believe this is basically just, this is gonna be standard maintenance, and it'll be coming from your...
It's delayed maintenance.
Yeah, it'll be coming from, I count five, 550, 400, Police Vehicle Repair and Maintenance. Council, questions?
Yeah, we had to do a very similar ourselves with my son on a vehicle similar to this one. It's not untypical.
What do you think the, I guess, life that we could still have in that vehicle?
The vehicle's only got sixty, I want to say sixty-two thousand, something like that. It's, it's on the quote that Bragg sent back, so it's still got a lot of life left in it the way it's being used. It's not in high-speed pursuits or anything like that, but it's important that, that it's reliable and safe for her to drive, because she's, she is driving it a lot.
Okay.
We ordered another vehicle a while ago. Has it ever delivered yet?
The, it's scheduled to be delivered in March.
Okay.
So, fingers crossed on that.
And it was gonna take a while, but...
You know, vehicle outfitters, my entire career have been problematic for every department I know of. They, they, they make promises and don't always deliver on those promises, but we're, fingers crossed, we're hoping to see that vehicle in March.
Okay, good.
And yes, I did the same exact thing I did with Chief Revis. When, when they call and ask for money, I say, come on, you're killing me.
He did.
So, I'm equal opportunity on the Chiefs, but, no, I appreciate that. We do need to have safe vehicles. It's, it's not a matter of just pure safe. It's about the car. It's about the, the person inside the car, and you don't know when that high-speed pursuit's gonna go, or when it's gonna happen, and if we don't have the, the car tuned in the proper manner, that could be a problem, so. I appreciate all that. So, Council, any other questions or discussion on this item? Alright, is there a motion?
I move to approve the estimate from Blag Tire And Services For The Repair Of The 2017 Dodge Charger Police Vehicle In The Amount Of $4,328.30.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilperson Favero, and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Gortney. Lynn, can you please call the vote?
Dr. Kay?
Aye.
Ms. Wellen?
Aye.
Mr. Dietrich?
Aye.
Mr. Gortney?
Aye.
Alright, the item passes. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Council.
It's a good, good public safety night. Appreciate it. In lieu of the, the weather this evening, we've, we've cleared the items on the agenda, and instead of elongating on any special comments, I'm gonna go ahead and just end the meeting, so we can get folks back out on the road. So, it is now 7:37, and the meeting...